Be on mute, except when you're gonna talk, and then just make sure you turn it on before you speak.
Alright, we're live now.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I want to thank everybody who's online with me tonight, council and, and staff, and those who are watching. It is six o'clock, and we're gonna go ahead and call the Edgefield County Council meeting for Wednesday, August 5th, to order. And I'd like to invite Councilman Campbell to open us up in a word of prayer, please.
Okay, thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you now to say thank you. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our county in this way, whether we're staff or elected official. And Lord, we, we thank you for also protecting those of us from the coronavirus. And we ask you to protect all those around us, in Edgefield County in particular. Those who have it, Lord, please help them to heal quickly and fully. And Lord, we also ask you to bless this meeting, to give us wisdom, to have us say the things that would be a blessing. And Lord, finally, we pray, and I pray, to say thank you for our bides. Thank you for bringing him to Edgefield County. Thank you for letting him serve with us. And we ask you to please bless him and his family as he begins a new chapter of his life. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, if you will, join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. And I think Jennifer's gonna hold it up there. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I know it's a unique situation for us all to get used to doing meetings via Zoom, so. Well, with that, I would, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion was made by Councilman Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our July 7th County Council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Biggs, and I think seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Okay, is there any discussion about the minutes from July 7th? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is guest speakers. We do not have a guest speaker. I did have Mr. Gilchrist was going to join us if it was live. He is the chairman of the African American Chamber of Commerce for South Carolina. And he is also recently appointed to the United States Commission on Civil Rights by President Trump. So he'll be an interesting guest speaker, hopefully, next month. Jennifer, I know we had a couple of comments that were emailed in. I know at least one of the items was for the public hearing. Are there any other comments in addition to the public hearing item?
We have two comments for the pub, first public comments section. The first one came in from Linda Anderson. It reads, "I understand this need as requested. As a citizen who has closely followed this process from beginning of the comprehensive plan to its conclusion, and have attended meetings of the LMO up to and including the final scheduled LMO steering committee meeting, as was held. As stated on the agenda, this resolution would not restrict staff from meeting or talking with individuals or small groups to provide information regarding the LMO. It would also not restrict staff from reviewing the current draft for mistakes and possible recommendations to the planning commission for improvements. My question then becomes, how will citizens have access to these meetings and discussion as it goes forward in order to stay informed?" Does any, did you want anybody to address that, or do you want me to move to the second comment?
Jennifer, I think we will address that when we're discussing the item.
Okay. The second comment that we got for the first section is also about the LMO. It came from John Pettigrew. It reads, "Thank you for the opportunity to address you briefly tonight concerning item six under new business, which would suspend the land management development ordinance. I support the suspension to allow time and consideration by the public of this very important matter. I have attended two of the steering, steering committee meetings, and there has not been the opportunity for public comments since before the unveiling of the draft zoning map. I understand that the full planning commission will schedule at least two public hearings in the future, and expect these will be well attended if the virus situation allows. The proposed zoning map makes drastic changes to our current zoning, and I feel it is imperative to allow ample opportunity for public review and discussion. Along those lines, have you also considered a moratorium on new subdivision developments until the final passage of the new zoning ordinance? Recently, a number of new subdivisions have been approved in the Meriwether area of Edgefield County. Some developers may have sought approval prior to, prior to new, more restrictive zoning guidelines and requirements were passed. A temporary pause may be in order to allow adequate time to fully evaluate the impact of these 1,500 to 2,000 homes on our infrastructure such as roads, schools, water and sewer, etc. Thank you for your time and consideration." And those are the only two comments that I have for the first public comment section.
Outstanding. Thank you. And, and we will address that when, when the item comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the reports. Does anyone have any comments from the, on the reports that are listed? Alright, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there any reason to remove either one of these items from the consent agenda? Alright, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Biggs and seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The, the next item on the agenda is our public hearing, and I think we had one individual email in for that.
We did. This comment also came from Linda Anderson. It reads, "County Council and the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission determined there is a critical need for a law enforcement center. The projected cost will be upwards of $27 million. As written in the agenda requesting the 1% sales tax referendum question be placed on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot, the proceeds are to be used for the following purposes or projects: constructing, acquiring and equipping a portion of a new county law enforcement center with detention facilities, including land acquisition, not to exceed $10,97,269. What this indicates is there will remain a balance of approximately $16,902,731 that is more than half the projected cost. Therefore, we can assume that property taxes will need to be raised to cover the remaining balance. The question then becomes, why limit the revenue generated from this sales tax to $10,97,269, rather than utilize all revenue generated from this tax to cover the cost of the law enforcement center, reducing the need for property tax increase as much as possible? Any overage generated will be given to the county council to determine the use which would not be in keeping with the intent of the citizens' approval for the tax to fund the center. Therefore, I'm requesting the council consider an amendment that simply states, any and all revenue generated through this tax be utilized to fund as much of the law enforcement center as possible, and that any overage beyond the cost of the center can then be placed in reserve for other needs." That was the only comment that we had for the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, then the next item on the agenda is, first item under old business, which is consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number 1920-770, an ordinance to impose, subject to referendum approval, and pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax, a 1% sales tax, sales and use tax within Edgefield County for not more than eight years. And we have reviewed this twice. This is the third reading. I'll ask our administrator if there's any additional comments that he would like to make.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is final reading. The $10 million figure came from our financial advisor. I would remind council that council has to either vote the question that was presented to them by the Capital Project Sales Committee, up or down. So, and Andrew can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you wanted to amend it, I don't think that you can. The proposal, and, and the funding mechanism that we're looking at would be to pay the first eight years from this Capital Project Sales Tax, and have another one for the next seven years, and probably another one for the next seven years to keep it off the tax roll, to try to keep from increasing property taxes at all. There's nothing that requires this bond, the way it's being structured, to be paid off within the initial eight years.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of third reading of ordinance number 1920-770.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion?
Just have a question.
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Campbell.
I guess the administrator or, or the attorney can answer. Based on how this wording is constructed, when this is on the ballot, will, will it be one question or two questions that citizens have to answer?
Andrew?
Looking at the question, I see just one question.
I, I thought there was a, a question to bonding and that kind of stuff.
The bonding, I believe, is, Tommy, correct me if I'm wrong, that's separate.
Correct. Must a, the question will read, must a special 1% sales and use tax be imposed in Edgefield County, the county, for not more than eight years from the date of imposition to raise the amount specified for the following purposes? $10,97,269, $269 for a portion of the acquisition, construction and equipping of a new law enforcement center with detention facilities, including land acquisition. And then instructions to the voters, no be yes or no. That would be the ballot question. We would not need a, because we would be using the, looking at doing a lease purchase type process, we wouldn't need to go over our bonding limit for the purchase, so we don't need the question for the bond.
Okay. Alright, and one other question, look at my notes here. The, nevermind, you've answered it. So no, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I could go back to Mr. Campbell's question, the way it's being structured with the bond is over the 20 or 25 year period that we would stretch it out, you would buy one, one twentieth of the building and facility per year. And so the only thing that goes against our bonding capacity is the amount of the payment for one year. And that allows us to, to keep it under our bonding capacity.
The only additional comment that I would make is that we've got a, a little over 95 days, or roughly 95 days, to educate our constituents on, on the need, and this is really, at least in our opinion, the best way to fund what is a, a true need in our county. Is there any other comments or questions? Alright, Mr. Biggs, you just unmute your phone, or your...
Yeah, um, am I okay now? Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah. Tommy answered my question. I, I, I think my, my, my question after your comment is, what is the best way for us, the council, to get this out to the community in time? So that we can, I don't know how we, I know we put it on our website, but I think we need to do more than that to sell this. People hear tax, and I worried about they may put this, unless it's can explain just like was done just now, in a short period. I think we need to get that message out to our, our constituents as much as we can.
Yeah, and I want to open up to any other comments, but I would say we each have our own sphere of influence. I, I think in addition to our reaching our sphere of influence, possibly speaking at a couple of churches over the next few weeks, and, and maybe a couple of editorials as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, we cannot put any tax dollars to this to advocate, and, and county employees cannot advocate for or against. But we're here, and if any churches, we want, anybody wants us to do a presentation, come explain to their group, we will certainly be open to do that. We want to get the information out. And whether it's up or down, they make a knowledgeable decision.
Yes, sir. Alright. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, we are moving on to new business. First item under new business is consideration of approval to authorize the county administrator to use up to $5,000 from the 2005 general obligation bond approved by ordinance number 45564 for the construction of a nine-hole disc golf course at Bettis Park. And I'll ask our attorney, I mean, sorry, county administrator, if he has anything he would like to add.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is money that was left over from the bond in 2005. It was used to, for security system for the courthouse, acquiring and installing GIS software, tax assessor mapping, records management system for clerk of court's office, and constructing and equipping a new facilities out at Bettis Park. And this is money that's left over from that. We've got about $33,000 still there. When we, we were going through the budget process, this question came up. And I got the impression, if not the direction, that council felt it would be better to finance this project if you wanted to go forward with it out of the bond rather than the general fund. And so this would allow us to use the funds in the bond to go forward with the proposed disc golf course. An outline of that course has been included with your agenda packet, and how it will be laid out at Bettis Park. And our recreation director, Nick, has talked to the fellow about disc golf. Pretty comfortable with $5,000 in being to lay it out in that facility without taking anything away from the facility.
Okay, thank you, sir. I would entertain a motion for consideration of approval to authorize the county administrator to use up to $5,000 from the 2005 general obligation bond approved by ordinance number 45564 for the construction of a nine-hole disc golf course at Bettis Park. Art made the motion.
Second.
It was seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item under new business is consideration of approval to authorize the county administrator to use funds not to exceed $30,000 from the 2015 vehicle bond purchase, to purchase a truck for county maintenance. And I'll ask the county administrator to elaborate, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is more or less an oops on my part. Last council meeting, you know, I came and y'all approved me buying one, a used one, for our maintenance department. When we started pulling the numbers and looking at the used vehicles we could get, they were in the low $20,000 range and had 100,000 plus miles on it. When we pulled the state bid prices, we could buy a new one that would meet his needs for about $26,000. That would give us about three or four years of additional service life of that vehicle. It just seems like a better deal on the long term for the county to purchase the new vehicle, given the price difference. So I wanted to come back and ask council if it would be better for us to go in that direction instead of the used one.
And I'm just gonna ask you a couple of quick questions, and then we'll do a motion and discuss it. This vehicle that we're replacing for Joe currently has over 300,000 miles on it? And, and he, is he the third or the second user of this vehicle?
It has over 300,000 miles on it. It is about to need some engine. It is about to need some major repairs. And I know it was a hand-me-down from our EMA director. I don't know if anybody had the truck prior to her or not. That was before Tom.
Yes, sir. Okay, I would entertain a motion for consideration of approval to authorize the county administrator to use funds not to exceed $30,000 from the 2015 vehicle bond to purchase a truck for county maintenance.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell. Seconded by Councilman Biggs. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. For, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is consideration of approval for first reading of ordinance number 2021-771, an ordinance to approve the policies for a stay-neuter program for Edgefield County and other matters relating thereto. And I'll ask the administrator to elaborate, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In 2014, Edgefield County entered into an agreement with Aiken SPCA, now known as the SPCA Albright Center, the, for a low and moderate income families to get their animals spayed and neutered. We've been, we issue them a voucher. They go to the SPCA and have those services done. The SPCA then bills us for those services, and, and we pay them. The SPCA has contacted me, and, and they need to go up on what they're charging us. And, and it's a good little bump, but it is, those rates are contained within the ordinance. So we have to have the ordinance change to up those rates. Every year, we budget $5,000 for this program. What this does is help keeps our pet population down in the county, which reduces the cost for what we have to pay Aiken County for the animal shelter, and also keeps nuisance animals and, and strays and, and that type of thing down as well.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. I would entertain a motion for consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2021-771.
So moved, Mr. Campbell.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert. And I will, and it was seconded by Councilman Campbell. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Campbell, go ahead, please.
Just a, a question, to make sure we're all on the same page. So, in a moment, we're gonna have an MOU with the Edgefield Veterinary Clinic that's related to this. If I understand this resolution, I mean, this ordinance correctly, it allows any veterinary clinic, and anyone, for example, that might want to open up in the future, to be a part of this. Is that correct, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Campbell, and, and thank you for bringing that up. After I clicked off, I left that out. But let's not restrict it, let's not restrict it just to the SPCA. Any licensed veterinary clinic could reach out to the county and participate in this program with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other comments or questions? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Jackie, you raised your hand, correct? Okay, thank you. I just didn't see it. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Alright, the next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Edgefield Veterinary Clinic. And we just alluded to this, but is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Paradise?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This, they will be agreeing to do it for the same rate. It will keep the, give our residents an opportunity for a different location, somewhere that may be more convenient. Ms. Gilli checked with all the veterinary services in the county, and this was the only one that wished to participate at this time, but it'll be open to others. But they will have indicated that they're agreeable to provide these services at the current rate until the ordinance changes. And then they'll, those rates will increase to what we're charging them, or what the new rates will be.
Alright, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gilli, for making that effort, keeping it local. That's important.
Amen.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of resolution number 2021-1128, calling on the citizens of Edgefield County to take recommended precautions to prevent the further spread of COVID-19, of the COVID-19 pandemic, having evidence in Exhibit 5. And this really came about last week, or maybe 10 days ago, when the governor asked counties and municipalities to, to maybe consider a resolution or ordinances, and this would be the first step. So I would ask our administrator to add any comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have, and, and we have been trying to push out some information to y'all and, and the staff to keep you updated on what's been going on. We have seen a spike started the last part of June as, as an increase in infections in the county occurred. Just to give you a few data points, right now, those that are being tested in the state, 20.7% of those come back infected, so about 1 in 5 that's tested is infected. 21% of the state in the, has, of all the people that have been shown to be infected in the state, 21% of those have occurred within the last 14 days, which means they're currently infected. In Edgefield County, as I put on here, we were at 44% when I wrote the agenda. As today's calculations, we have 108 active cases, or 36% of our cumulative cases have occurred in the last 14 days. There's nine counties and 58 municipalities that have had, has ordinances requiring some kind of mask as a requirement. This is not a requirement. This is an ask. But the Tommy Paradise math here, and I'm not a statistician, but whenever I look at 108, and we had some days where we had 19 and 10 active infections, we've had five deaths. But whenever I see 108, and I think about 1 in 10 is diagnosed, that's 1,000 infected persons in the county right now. With a population of 27,000, that means 1 in every 27 people we come in contact with is infected. And it may be asymptomatic, and nobody even knows that they're carrying this virus. So that's kind of where the county is at. And along with the governor's request for the resolution.
All right, Tommy, thank you very much. So I would entertain a motion for consideration of approval of resolution number 2021-1128, calling on the citizens of Edgefield County to take recommended precautions to prevent the further spread of COVID-19 pandemic.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, and then the last item on the agenda is kind of a tough one, but it is relevant to where we are today and what we just discussed. Consideration of approval to suspend further land management ordinance development until January 1st, 2021, or other, or such other time as determined by council. And I imagine there might be some discussion after, after a motion is made, but I'll ask our administrator to elaborate first, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This has been an ask that we continue it because of COVID. There's certainly, it is a project that we're already behind on because of COVID. It is, COVID has really impacted our ability to get the word out and work on this. It's limited our consultants' some in their travels. But two things too, is kind of a sidebar note on this is, one, we have a new planning commissioner coming on that he just appointed tonight. We may have another one coming on in September. This would allow both of them an opportunity to become familiar with the document. It will also allow the public to become familiar with the document. Now, to address Ms. Anderson's question, is that is what we would like to have happen during this interim? Is for the public to become educated on the document and familiar with it and come to staff and say, hey, we have these questions. We have these ideas. Just like she comes by the office from time to time, we hope that we will get those as well. Or if some group wants us to come speak to them and talk to them about it, that's what we would do. There would not be any changes made to the ordinance other than maybe typos, cleaning it up. But there will not be any changes to the ordinance unless the planning commission changes those at this point. It would also allow council to become familiar with the document and also interact with staff and ask questions. And so that when we get back up and running in January, hopefully, we have a lot of the issues that may be thorns ironed out and that we can move the project along fairly quickly and have some of the bumps smoothed out.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. I imagine there might be a little bit of discussion on this, but I'll start with a motion. I would entertain a motion for consideration of approval to suspend further land management ordinance development until January 1st, 2021, or such other time as determined by county council.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion was made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Just a comment back to the public hearing comments. So I'll ask the administrator this. So in the, in the background between now and January 1st or thereafter, even if you discuss with groups or small groups or one-on-one something, and somebody says, you know, y'all messed this up, and you say, you know, you're right. You really did. You're not going to change the document. You're just going to make that note so that when we come back, when you come back to the planning commission at some point, you can say, I've had these meetings, and here's all the things that have come up that hasn't changed anything. The document was frozen in time in August, where we're doing it tonight. But here's the changes that have come up since then that we like to discuss. Is that kind of how it would be handled?
Yes, sir, Mr. Campbell. That's exactly how it would be handled. We'll also have the, we should go live tomorrow, having it posted on the website. And we'll have a digital map there where you can click on a particular parcel and make comments on that parcel that will come back to staff. Now, one thing I did fail to mention is that in looking at our contracts, we will probably have to revise the contract. This may cost the county some money with our consultants, $8,000 to $10,000 to extend the contract for the additional time. I anticipate them working with us and in the reviewing of this during the next three, four months, so there's more time spent by them on this project. But yes, sir, Mr. Campbell, back to your, your statement, is it would be frozen in time. There would not be any changes unless it's made by the planning commission before the public. And then after we come back from the freeze, there would be the public hearings for the planning commission. And then, of course, it will come to y'all, and then it'll be public hearings for council as well.
All right, good, because I wanted to make sure that everybody listening and everybody in the future hears that this is still a transparent, open process. This is just an opportunity for people now from now to January to learn more about it and talk to you and see, or anybody else, and to see what the changes are they might would recommend. So I appreciate that. So thank you.
Of course.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I just like, something, maybe I misunderstood something. This question took Mr. Paradise. Did he say that since we're going to delay this to January, we would have to pay who? We would have to pay?
We have, we have a contract with our consultants to provide this service. They work so many hours within that contract as a schedule. I talked with them. They don't have a problem with modifying the contract, but it may cost us a little bit more money because of that. The county attorneys reviewed the contract as well. And I don't want to speak for the county attorney. My impression from him was that he was agreeing that it would be additional work on part of the contractor. It would stretch the process out for the consultant. And a contract change would not be out of line. Now, I would anticipate that coming to y'all next month for funding. This was kind of a short turnaround. It came up over the weekend. We posted this on the agenda on Monday. And so the consultant really did not have time, nor did staff have time to work with the consultant and put any figures together. We anticipate doing that by next, by the next council meeting.
And I'm just going to pig you onto that. There's a couple of places we could pull those funds from. One would be the council contingency fund. Where else could we pull it from, Tommy?
Two that I have looked at, one would be council contingency fund. You have $40,000 there or roughly. And in the administrator's line item, there's, there's a line for stormwater consultant. If council wanted to reappropriate that for this use, that would be $10,000. And that's just the first two that I looked at. There may be more digging. But part of the problem is, is we're at the beginning of the budget year. So if this was in May, we could look in the budget and say, oh, well, you know, Doc hadn't used this out of his budget. We can move that over there. But we're really not to that point where we can say we have unused funds in a particular line item somewhere. So I'm looking at two line items that we generally do not use a lot of money out of and so that, you know, we stay under budget.
And how much do, and roughly, roughly speaking, how much this would cost us?
The ballpark figure, and this is just a ballpark figure on the telephone. And Dr. Kenyon, remember, I called the consultant on Monday. This is the first that he heard of the idea.
Yes, I understand.
And so this is a ballpark, but he said $8,000 to $10,000.
I'd like to inject something too.
Go ahead, Talbert.
Tommy. That amount of money, that amount of money is a great big amount. And I should hope that we can, we can do better with that spend or two. You know, we can bring it down some because we're trying to save the taxpayers all we can. You know, we're looking at several things coming down the line. And I definitely appreciate if the county attorney can look into it and talk with them and see really what we can come up with, you know? We know that this COVID vibe is 19. It's one, it's beyond our control. And so I think as a council member, we should look for the best way that we can try to do him down. Not say do him down, but come with less price, you know? Team, $6,000, $10,000, that's a lot of money for that period of time.
So Tommy, you're going to negotiate with them to the best of our ability, right?
Yes, I will. We have not got into the dollars and cents yet. You know, but the other thing is, is we are kind of stuck in a way because we have this consultant under contract. And we don't, at this point, you know, we need to finish it up with this consultant rather than going to somebody else to start over. We have a large investment there already. And, you know, we're going, we're going to do what we can to keep the cost down. But at the same time, we need to finish it up.
The contract does provide for changing conditions and everything. So we will, of course, be discussing with them, you know, as per the contract that there's been changes. And partially, you know, it depends how far things have moved along with what they've done, what there's still left to do. But we have covered a lot of stuff in the contracts. We'll be in discussions with them about that. So before I make my quick comments, Art, you haven't spoken. Was there anything you wanted to add?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because my picture's a little messed up. I certainly agree about the concern over the dollars. But I think that we're sort of caught in a little whiplash here that it's, in my mind, it's absolutely necessary that the public have their chance for their input on this. And it's obvious that during this pandemic, particularly now, they are not going to be able to have the ability to do that. I also understand the necessity, the private business that we have a contract with, that we cannot expect them to extend this for a period of time without getting some compensation. So in my mind, what's overriding on this is the concern for the, our taxpayers and constituents, that the ability for input on this very important issue, that they really need to be satisfied that they have had their input. So I don't like to spend the money either, but we do have it. So I mean, I'm just making the pitch for that. I think the overriding factor in my mind is, is the necessity for in-person, open hearings with the public to hear what they have to say about this. Yes, they can get better educated over this, but it's important that they have their say, open public hearings as required by the contract. So I can just hope that Tommy might be able to negotiate. But I buy for spending the money necessary to expend this. Hopefully, as to where we're going to be able to have public meetings.
Okay, thank you, Art. Dean, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one comment, or actually a question. I think Dr. Kenyon and Mr. Talbert make a very good point in that, so I'm going to express it just a different way. If we're going to freeze this thing, I would expect the consultant not to do any work for the next five months. So if he's not doing any work the next five months, and then he picks back up, where's the extra costs come in? Because we're not delaying it tonight. He'd be working the next five months under the current pay we'd be giving. So I guess I'm just unclear of what he's going to do that's going to require more pay.
So a couple of thoughts that I have as it relates to that, Dean. And I hope I'm coming across because my screen is going really slow. This process really began in August of 2018 with the comprehensive plan. And the LMO was really part two, which began in August of 2019. And I've had several constituents tell me in the last week that they've been very impressed with our transparency, with open meetings all the way through. And so I just wanted to highlight those that told me that because I think we have done a good job. And I was even speaking with John here, and he was comparing it to some other counties. We have done a good job. The planning commission has done a good job. The steering committee, who has volunteered a tremendous amount of time, I just want to give them a kudos. But when we think about hosting public hearings and limiting them, I think it does make sense to postpone it so that there's no perception of in these last two public hearings. Because as is often the case, people don't read anything until the last minute.
That's right.
And what this does do is hopefully highlights the fact that everybody who cares about this has a tremendous amount of extra time to read this and study it and to make impact into it if they, if they choose to. And I don't know that we want to tell Mr. Ford and his team to just not do anything for the next four months because we might be able to refine it and make it better when we do come back and have that public hearing, or the two public hearings that are scheduled, whether that be in January or December, whenever. So those are the two cents that I have. I do appreciate everybody's comments about wanting to save the taxpayers' money. But I believe at the end of the day, our product is going to be a good product, and it's going to really be beneficial for everybody in the county.
Chairman, if I might.
Yes, Mr. Paradise.
What you were saying is, what I, my envision is probably, instead of freezing and walking away, as people come in and talk with Kevin and Doc and me and go through this process and they get comments, that dialogue that that dialogue with the consultants will be ongoing. So that at the end of four months, they don't have a stack that they're going through. So I don't think it's really a freeze on the consultant's part. I think there'll be work going on, how much, what's the value of that? Or do we want to freeze it and say, don't do anything for four months? And let the consultants get cold on the subject? That, that's, would be part of that contract. But I do see them working and putting in some additional hours. How many hours? I don't know yet. But I don't think it's going, I, I think there'll be additional work there by the consultants to keep, keep it so that in January, they can pick up the ball and, and move it forward.
And the only other question that I'm going to add is really for Andrew to research this, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but what is the reality? We, we had one constituent make a comment about putting a moratorium on development until this zoning is in place. I was going to research that, but what, what, what are our options as it relates to that?
Yeah, because we really don't have an ordinance, you know, pending yet.
Could you say that again?
Yes, you know, John Pegru's question was, can things be put on moratorium? Right now, there's no pending ordinance, you know, things are still in the development stage. So we really can't put a moratorium on new subdivisions on something that, you know, is still a work in progress. And once we have the ordinance, then it's a different ballgame.
Okay, are there any other? Jackie, were you going to say something?
No.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Raise your hand.
Can I speak to the moratorium issue?
Yeah, Mr. Paradise, go ahead.
As far as the moratorium goes, we have our development plans in place now. We're not getting overrun like York County or Charleston County or Beaufort County. We're getting more growth in the center, have momentum going. A moratorium would shut, would stop all that momentum. And it would tell developers, just the discussion of the moratorium makes it questionable, gives them a question whether they want to invest in Edgefield County or not and, and make those preliminary steps. We're also trying to capture residents of the cyber command that's moving to this area. And so if, if you put a more, if you were to put a moratorium on, on construction, you would lose development for those folks as well. There's a lot of reasons, if you ask me what my recommendation for a moratorium would be, I would not recommend it because we are trying to grow the county with more rooftops. As Mr. Williams gave you the statistics in an email, you need rooftops to have businesses, and we're trying to recruit businesses. So it's, it's the whole synergy effect of trying to get momentum in our word out there about Edgefield County and a moratorium would put the brakes on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Art, go ahead.
I'd agree with the administrator. We've seen more rooftops and the sale of lots in Mount Vinage in the last three months than we have in the last six years. I spoke to some people that are buying lots, they're selling a lot of lots over in Shaw Estates, the bigger lots. They are from cyber command, as a result of cyber. The, the, the couple that are building told me that they live about the same distance from their assigned area as they are down here. And it took them an hour, an hour and a half to go to work. As to here, it's taken 30 minutes. So that's going to resonate throughout cyber as far as the, what we thought and we discussed, I'm sure, last year and the year before. The cyber command was coming, bringing 3,000 dependents, and that they're all in need of housing. And I think that's coming to fruition. I also don't even feel comfortable advocating a, a moratorium. I think we just need to live with it and let the planning commission deal with the issue. And we have a lot of land and we can deal with it, I think. And I certainly can't see blowing anything down now. Just doing what we can do under the comprehensive plan rules, that's all.
Okay, thank you. If there's no additional comments or questions, all in favor of approving to suspend further land management ordinance development until January 1st, 2021, or other such time as determined by council, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I know that that was not a quick discussion. There is no executive session tonight. And the next item on the agenda is comments from the public on, for items that are not on the agenda. And Jennifer, do we have any?
We have one. This one also comes from Linda Anderson. It reads, "I would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Art Biggs for his representation of the Merriweather District Number Two citizens. I wish to extend what a wishes and congratulations on his and his wife's opportunity to move closer to his family and share with them quality time. Godspeed, Art and Dottie, and carry with you thanks from grateful citizens and fond memories. I would also like to take this time to say congratulations to Tiffany Ireland, who will take up the challenge of representing District Number Two in January."
And I thank Linda for her comments. I thank council.
Very good. Thank you, Linda, and thank you, Art. Next item on the agenda is our report from our county administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, you may remember we had the flash floods that night, been a month. And since then, we've worked with the county transportation committee, and we've made some significant progress from the Mill Creek Drive and Seamic Drive. We've got permission from the property owners and the forestry service to build a temporary road for the isolated portion of Mill Creek. This was started the day after the flood and was used the days after the flood. The CTC has authorized funding for the repairs to Mill Creek Drive and Seamic Drive. This takes a financial burden off of, of the county finances. And they also declared it an emergency. And by doing that, that helps expedite the bidding process. In fact, the engineering work is complete and the bids were due by 5:00 PM this afternoon. It was Monday, they extended that for two days because the contractors had some questions. Because the new culverts are being designed to handle a hundred-year flood. Culvert under Mill Creek Drive requires, required a size increase from what they originally engineered. It was originally 20 foot wide by eight feet high. Now it's 20 foot wide by 11 foot high. It's an arch culvert. That'll take about a month to prepare. And that's already in the production queue. One of the things I'd like to say is last in July, that was a team effort. And I'd like to thank all of our partners who helped in that. That was Merriweather Fire Department, South Carolina DOT, South Carolina Emergency Preparedness Division, South Carolina National Guard, and the U.S. Forestry Service. And that's in addition to the private property owners that let us get access to Mill Creek subdivision and provided access across their land, both for the road and the temporary transportation of residents to their homes. Free COVID-19 testing is being done on Wednesday, August the 12th. Ford dealership, Johnston, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And it's also being conducted at Betis Academy on Wednesday, August 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. These are first come, first served, no repeat, appointments needed, and are offered by self-regional. We had another one of these earlier today at E-Bot Tech here in Edgefield. We've received the delivery of the Aero misting machine purchased through a grant from South Carolina DHEC. We are in our emergency management, both for working to sanitize the high hazards areas for the public and the employees. They have done the family courtroom, and they've also done the lobbies in the needs field. Anticipate in our ambulances and other buildings as we move forward with the process. We are in the process of upgrading all of our Xerox copying machines and have completed 12 of those, with additional seven to come. These copiers, and, and your agendas might get a little bit more colorful, excuse the pun, because these will be able to print in color and are connected to the network. We hope that this will reduce the cost for inkjet purchasing cartridge for inkjet printers. Hopefully we can phase them out. And we look to hopefully actually reduce costs by having the color printers instead of the inkjet. The Sweetwater Community Center has reopened in accordance with the executive order from the governor. It's limited to 50%, which is about 50 people. And to get 50 people in there, all users have to wear masks. The football board has met and has recommended that we not have a fall football season. And at this point, I would also like to thank Councilman Biggs for his trust, his support, his guidance, his leadership, and just being a friend to me the last four and a half years and helping me fit in in Edgefield County and help me stay, as I like to say, Art, keeping me on the Do Right program and not letting me get off the straight and narrow very far. I also wish you and Ms. Dottie the best, and, and I really do hope that y'all will stay in contact.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, Tommy. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the administrator? I see none. I will, I will be brief with a couple of quick comments. I also want to start by saying thank you to my neighbor right up the road, Mr. Biggs. It's been a pleasure working with you. We first started working together on the Tax Appeals Board a few years ago, and I know you were busy there for several years with Jackie's dad, Ashley, among others. And I know you were instrumental in your community where you live, and you're going to be greatly missed. And I think I've told you this, but I haven't told the rest of the team. I have a very good kind of second set of parents that live in Winchester, Virginia. So I don't think you're going to get rid of me. I'll probably come and share a meal with you some point. But we have something for you. We, we had wanted to do a meet and greet, and we weren't able to do that, which is very sad, but do you have the item that we put together for you? Yeah.
Can you see that?
Yes, sir. This is a plaque to recognize you, and Jennifer put that together for us, and we are just really grateful to you. But I'll just ask, before I finish my last two comments, if anyone else wants to say anything to Art, or Art, if you want to say something, go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, I appreciate that. First, my, my only regret is I can't be there to shake Art's hand tonight since we're on Zoom, so, Art, I'm sorry for that. I did want to say that it's been great knowing and working with Art, like everybody has said. You know, even though Art had retired when he came here, he actively served on county boards and, as we know, county council. And he was an outstanding vice chair. He was fair, he was diligent, particularly on budget issues. And he did a lot in that area that people aren't aware of. And quite frankly, he did more than is required by the vice chair, and I always appreciate that. He accomplished a lot, but let me hit just one highlight. I mean, we joke about his diligence for litter and all things litter. But he's championed this cause, has helped us reduce litter in our county. And he's helped us find a way to work on it in the future. So, you know, he's got many different landmarks that he's left, but that will be one I think we certainly all can appreciate and citizens will appreciate because it's something we see every day. I will tell you that Art is the kind of person that I never would have run into in any other place but county government. We likely never would have circled in the same places. But I'm glad that, that he became involved in county government. He's been a great teammate. And there's one thing tonight I'm very certain of, and that Edgefield County is better off today because of Art. So, Art, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean.
All right, is there anyone else who wants to say a thing? All right, well, just real quick, I do want to say we are excited about Tiffany Ireland coming on board to serve. Art's shoes will never be filled, there's no question about it. But I know that she has a great passion for Edgefield County. We're looking forward to working with her. And Albert and I are actually going to meet with her next week and kind of hopefully bring, have her onboarding experience be second to none. And I also wanted to just let council know, you know, we publicly thanked everyone involved with the Mill Creek rescue, if you will, of building, building that road. But one day, about 10 days ago, Vice Chairman Talbert and Mr. Paradise and myself on behalf of county council went out to the road crew and just had breakfast with them and said, thank you on behalf of each of you for what they did, working overtime that week. It was a big deal. But the last thing is Vice Chairman Talbert and I attended the South Carolina Association of Counties meeting this past weekend. I just wanted to give you the classes that we were in. And I'm going to give you guys something to kind of look at offline. But we attended a public budgeting class, a planning and land use management class, actually. Decision-making in the political, in the political environment. One workshop, which was very important, and this is, this workshop is available online, so y'all can watch it. As can the sheriff's office, because this was led by multiple sheriffs from around the state, is building connections between law enforcement and the community. That was very timely. And then the last one was ensuring cyber resilience in county government, which was actually facilitated by an Edgefield County resident, Stacy Coleman, who, who did a great job facilitating that. So I wanted to just give you that report, and I hope everybody is staying safe and practicing social distancing and wearing a mask when you're out. And we look forward to seeing you again in a month, if not before. Is there any questions or comments for me?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Biggs.
I, I, I just want to thank, I, I've talked to a number of you personally. I appreciate your comments. I've been in, in government of some sort for years, my adult life. And I have really thoroughly enjoyed county government. I was involved somewhat up north, but not to the extent down here. And I have bragged about Edgefield County, about how forward-thinking we are, even though we're one of the 26 on the lower scale, lower part of our, our counties in this state. The move was quick and not anticipated to be so quick. And, but I will carry warm memories. And I also will be in touch. I mean, I, I'm not forgetting Edgefield County at all. I'm certainly going to be interested in, in how you make out on the, on the tax issue. I'll certainly follow the jail issue. My cell phone number is not changing at all. It'll be the same. And I will be sorry that I am not going to be able to be here to see our litter officer graduate and start a program here that will, that we will have one of the cleanest counties, hopefully. In, in, in my mind, you know that, that, that I, I have, uh, felt very strongly about litter. We all don't like litter. And I do believe that by bringing the litter officer back and working with Palmetto Pride, that we're going to be able to certainly make an impact, certainly a lot better than what we were doing before. So, I'm sorry I'm not going to be able to see that, but I will carry all your memories with me. And, uh, I will be in touch. So, I thank you all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Biggs? And just so you know, and it was not planned this way, but maybe other higher power had, had it planned this way. We posted the litter control officer's position today. Just, just, um, it's kind of symbolic that it's your last meeting, and we post that position same day.
That, that's, that's good news. I mean, I, I know you're, I know we're going to move, the county is going to move the program forward. Uh, everyone has the same concern. And, and I really believe that bringing it over here as to where we're working on, uh, we have a litter officer that's working forty hours a week on litter. And, uh, I, I do think that we're going to be able to get some help from Palmetto Pride. So, uh, again, I will certainly touch base on occasion. I, my wife says she doesn't believe it, but I said, "I really think that I'm going to retire, retire." And, uh, I look forward to building my house. It'll take me about a year, and then I'm going to sit on the front porch, and I can watch the sunset over the mountains of West Virginia with a little, little, uh, drink of, of, of sweet tea in my hand. So, again, remember, it's a southern state, so I'm not going back Yankee.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Art.
Yeah, thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions for me, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion's made, made by, uh, Mr. Biggs and seconded by Mr. Campbell. Thank you all. You all have a good rest of the week.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Don't forget to vote.